Gabriella? Madam Clerk?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Does the phone need to be turned back on for the councilman?
Yes.
Check.
Oh, muted, oh, okay.
But we heard him coughing, so it didn't sound muted.
Councilwoman Lagotti, you're back online.
Check.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. May 20th, 2019, agenda meeting in the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Here.
Councilwoman Farkas?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Present.
Councilwoman Lagotti?
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Here.
Councilwoman Revulinski?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlerger Publishing Companies on January 10th, 2019. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda-scheduled matters has been completed.
Hey, we're going to dispense with items four and five until the regular meeting and go right into items for discussion. First, changing the June 10th council meeting to June 17 at 7:00 PM. Does anyone have any thoughts on this for or against?
What's the reason, Mr. Mayor?
I do not know.
For the introduction of the budget tonight needs a certain amount of days before we can vote on it, so therefore we have to extend it and make it a little longer.
Would it be possible to do the following week?
Going longer, longer.
And I do apologize, but I'm going to-
The 24th, and that's the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah. I have a planned vacation, which I'm not just going to be out of town, but I will be out of the country.
The meeting after, there's only one meeting in June, so it wouldn't be the 24th, it would actually be July. I believe it's, I'm looking at the calendar.
Does it have to be on a Monday?
July 8th would be the next council meeting after June. That's the next scheduled council meeting.
What's the amount of days from today that it has to be?
Four weeks. Four weeks.
Twenty-three days, I believe. Twenty-eight days. I was close. I have no problem with the 24th. I mean, my bell, I just don't know what everybody else's schedule is. You're getting into vacations and everything else. School graduations.
I'll be here. I mean, I'm hesitant to wait much into July to get this done. We're already way past the date that it should have been.
That's fine. July 24th is fine. We did it back-to-back last week and this week.
No, it would only be one in June.
Right, so then if we do June and then July, it's almost back-to-back.
It would be, it would be June 17th or July 8th is the next, is the council meeting after that. Those are the two scheduled dates right now. Or, well, it's June 10th, we're requesting it to be changed to June 17th, and then the next regularly scheduled meeting after that is July 8th.
Is it possible to do it on June 24th?
Seems like most of us had that one day open anyway.
Is June 24th bad for anyone?
Not for me.
No, not for me either.
Nick?
You want to see if Nick is good for the 24th?
Nick, you good for June 24th?
I got no problems with June 24th, sir.
What do you got?
Yeah, it's fine.
June 24th.
June 24th?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, that will be reflected in a ordinance a little bit later this evening?
Just consensus, as the mayor, you can call, reschedule the meeting, so we just need a consensus on it, and then I'll advertise it appropriately tomorrow.
Okay, do we have, is it the consensus of the council to go ahead and change it to the 24th? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, there you go.
So may I ask you a quick question about that, though? So it's 30 days from now it's presented, then it's 30 days, we have an open hearing about it, is that correct?
It's introduced tonight.
Okay, and so it's introduced tonight, then we are expected to vote on it on the 24th?
Yes. Have an open, you know, meeting to vote on. Randy, can I explain it for you?
Yeah, you have, you have introductions, so you have, within 28 days, or after 28 days, not before, you have a public hearing, and you can do several things. You could have, you could introduce amendments, you could, if you approve to adopt, you could adopt it, or change a budget. Some amendments, depending on what those amendments are, we need another advertisement and a public hearing in itself for those amendments. But the public hearing will be on the introduced budget, so the public and the council will have a chance to voice their questions and opinions and so forth at that hearing.
If we did amendments on the 24th, we have to wait another 30 days to act on that?
No. There would be, most of them are within seven days, seven-day waiting period.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, et cetera? Seeing none, we'll move on. Managing Community Cats with local officials in the community. Brian Hackett, New Jersey State Director, State Affairs, for People for Animals. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening.
Is this on?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to chat about this issue that comes up in virtually every community in our state one time or another. But first, let me just introduce myself a bit further. I'm the New Jersey State Director for the Humane Society of the United States, where one of the largest animal protection organizations in our country. We have worldwide operations. We work to counter cruelty in all areas of animal, animal world, whether it's wildlife, marine animals. In this sense, we're dealing with companion animals and feral cats, which is the moniker they're known by. We prefer to call them community cats. And I'm pretty familiar with what's going on in Middlesex County and throughout the state. My personal background, I was born in New Brunswick, raised in Middlesex County, spent most of my life in Monroe, lived in Helmeta, was on the council there for a short period of time. I now reside down in Burlington County. But in my duration in this position, I've worked with a lot of municipalities, a lot of county governments, and some state legislators regarding this issue, because, as I said, it comes up everywhere. So to give a quick overview of this issue, what, what has been done about free-roaming so-called feral community cats in the past in many places? Well, what's, what's been done in many places is what's called catch and, and kill, catch and euthanize. So in other words, we basically have animal control officers round up free-roaming cats that are not owned. They end up at your sheltering organization that you're contracting with to provide animal care and control for your town, which I understand is Woodbridge Animal Shelter. And then they're held for seven days in accordance with state law. And then unfortunately, because they're not socialized and they're feral and they're not adoptable, most, if not all, in most circumstances, they're euthanized. So not only does this have humane and ethical concerns, but from a standpoint of public policy, it really is counterproductive, inefficient, and really a waste of resources, let alone the fact it doesn't work, because I've been working with communities around the state who have had these problems literally for decades with free-roaming cats and people feeding them improperly and people doing it underground. And you have complaints from other people in the community, and you have raccoon and other wildlife issues that come up from this. So, so what's been happening and the way it's been traditionally dealt with is just a failure, and it's not working. And pardon the cliche, but the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And unfortunately, in many communities around our state, that's, that's the approach to community cats. So one, one approach, and if not perhaps the only approach, that the Humane Society of the United States supports and we advocate very strongly for as an effective viable public policy, is one called trap, neuter, vaccinate, return. T-N-V-R. And what that entails is basically, in most cases, the municipality passes an ordinance which basically permits residents and rescuers, animal advocates, volunteers, whomever, that are caring for these unowned feral cats, community cats, to basically get them trapped, get them sterilized so they're not reproducing any further, get them vaccinated so they're not a public health threat in terms of rabies, and then release them back to where they were taken from the community, where they live out their lives, and eventually die off naturally the way any other, you know, wild animal would, would, would be, you know, naturally dying off. And, you know, the benefit of this is to understand TNVR as a humane population control and reduction program. When we're just trapping and euthanizing feral cats out there that are stray, no one owns them, you're never going to get every one. And so what's left out there still gets to reproduce and still continues to contribute to the problem in the community. What TNVR seeks to do is to get the adoptable kittens and cats off the street, get them into shelters and rescue groups where they can find loving homes. And then for the cats that are still left out there that are unsocialized and really unadoptable, because while cats are considered domestic companion animals in New Jersey, they, feral community cats are not socialized, they're, they're not able to be pets. So they are put back in the community, vaccinated and fixed, so they're not contributing any further to the problem. Another nice benefit of TNVR, when it's properly done and, and effectuated in a community, is what's called a colony effect. So when there are maintained colonies of cats, they prevent other cats from coming in. So conversely, when large amounts of cats are trapped and brought to shelter and euthanized, it creates a vacuum effect. So where those cats were trapped, now there's an empty spot where other community cats know that there's safe space and maybe there's food, so they go there and reproduce, and you could just see how the problem keeps on rolling out of control. So TNVR is a program that a number of municipalities have passed via ordinance, and in many ways, it can actually be cost-neutral or save money. I know you're deliberating your budget. Depending on how your animal care and control contract is formulated with Woodbridge, and I don't know the details of that, but for example, one municipality in South Jersey was actually paying per animal that was sent to the shelter. So in other words, every time a grouping of cats were sent to the shelter, a conservative estimate, they were spending about $120 a cat to trap it with their ACO, to send it to the shelter, hold it for seven days, and then euthanize it, which was a tremendous waste of resources, let alone the ethical and humane concerns of that process. Instead, when they did TNVR, they essentially looked at their budget and said, well, if we're spending about $120 per animal, we could do this for about $60 per animal to get it fixed. And that's if the town ended up paying for it. The nice thing about TNVR is it's largely driven by nonprofit organizations and rescue groups and volunteers who, because they're participating in a life-saving process, they're willing to donate their time and money and resources to this humane solution to reducing the populations of cats that are roaming about in your town. Edison, here in Middlesex County, has a TNVR program through their council, or through their shelter, and whereas other towns are doing the opposite, New Brunswick is one of the towns that has a really regressive feeding ban, and it's a complete failure. It's a disaster. People are not going to follow that feeding ban. People will feed anyway. It, it's, it's a draconian, outdated, inefficient policy. And so TNVR with an ordinance that allows this and properly regulates it, we've, we've found a lot of cost savings, a lot of effective management of these issues going forward, and we really find a lot of community buy-in to it when people are not doing it underground. And whereas instead, your animal control officer, which, as you know, every municipality in the state has to have an ACO, so that's something you're already having and paying for, they're working with an effective policy that builds a community up instead of really devising a community. One thing that these ordinances have is what's called a nuisance abatement process. So if there is a situation where neighbors can't agree about, you know, some situation with the cats, there's a 30 or 45 or 60-day nuisance abatement process. If ultimately, the neighbors and the ACO and a nonprofit group that may be assisting, if they can't come to an arrangement, then that cat could be trapped and, and brought to the shelter. But, you know, thi- this policy tries to bring people out of the woodwork, it tries to save money, it tries to effectively reduce these populations, because this is an ongoing problem. I don't know how much, how bad it is in Milltown compared to others, but I've worked with municipalities all throughout the state. You know, Cumberland County passed a resolution supporting this, Camden County, Cape May County largely does it on a county-wide level. Middlesex County, the Freeholders, passed a resolution last year endorsing the policy. So it's really, it's not taking off everywhere, but many communities around the country and around our state are doing it via ordinance. And, and I can provide as a follow-up to the meeting, to your emails, you know, some sample resolutions and ordinances that other municipalities have had success with, and also share with you further information. But I appreciate the opportunity to present on this tonight. I know it's been ongoing. I've heard about it in Milltown as well as many other places. So I appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hackett?
Just one that comes to mind.
Yes.
Given that it's a more humane approach, and I think that would have a certain impact on the people who are trying to hide out and are afraid that, you know, if, if they're found out for feeding cats, that the cats are going to be taken away and they're going to be euthanized, and they don't want to see that happen, are you seeing a better response from people in those communities that have a TNVR ordinance that they're coming forward instead of hiding out? That, that they are actually stepping up and saying, this is an okay solution for us?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've seen that, generally speaking, across the board, because what an ordinance would say is, the community and the town recognizes this policy, we recognize that these cats are there as no fault of their own, they're actually there out of the fault of human beings over time. And so we're going to implement this policy that properly regulates and allows this. So for example, it says, you know, people should only be feeding at a set time during the day and only for a set period of time. You just don't throw food out, and then that attracts other wildlife. So when people see that the community is buying into this type of program through this ordinance, it really does encourage people to do the right thing. Because right now, I mean, I probably get at least one call a week of somebody saying, you know, the ACO is threatening to ticket me, and so I'm going to go sneak out and feed these cats anyway. And then it, it, it's just, it's really just not an effective way of handling this, whereas this is a way to get buy-in and get people to do the right thing. Because ultimately, if people are not doing the right thing per the ordinance, then they're going to be ticketed, so it actually is an incentive to join the other people that are doing the right thing in terms of the cats. And then over time, it's tremendous. The one community in South Jersey that did this, the mayor was apprehensive, but there was a, a woman in town that, you know, they put their trust in, who runs a nonprofit to help coordinate the program. And, and I think seven months, she had fixed several hundred cats and had saved the town $40,000 or $50,000, and this was a smaller town. And, and the way that they had their animal control contract structured, you know, was a tremendous amount of cost savings. So I, I would look at, you know, your contract with Woodbridge, and, and I know that the Woodbridge Animal Shelter, I've spoken with them, they support this program, they try to work it in. Old Bridge as well, their council recently passed a TNVR program, and Dr. Anita Greenberg down there, she kind of helped spearhead that there a couple of years back, and so there's groups trying to get a handle on the cats there, because Old Bridge, I mean, the, the amount of community cats there was just tremendous. So we, we have seen a lot of success with it. One, it's not perfect, but it's the only solution that we've seen comprehensively really effectively address this across the board and really address the concerns, because what's been happening was so inefficient and inhumane and continuing the problem year after year after year, where, you know, you're banging your head against the wall and saying, why isn't this changing? So.
Just a, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any funding sources available that you're aware of?
Well, so there's a couple of ways to address that question. So one is Sustainable New Jersey is a program probably many of you are familiar with. A, a TNVR program could actually earn the municipality credits under Sustainable New Jersey towards grants within that program. So that's one potential area. That's more of an official type of granting. Other than that, what I alluded to earlier is the fact that many people and groups are already doing this. Nonprofit groups, rescue groups, I think there's a, a place in town right now, Karma Cat, you know, they're participating in this. So a lot of organizations that are already doing this out of their own pocket would be coming forward to assist with it. I mean, a lot of times volunteers do the trapping. There's an organization, People for Animals, right down in Robbinsville, they do low-cost spay-neuter vaccinations for community cats at, I think it's $75. No, it's 65, it's even cheaper. But, so, you know, a lot of that funding may be provided just out of Good Samaritan's own pocket. And then thirdly, as I alluded to, is within your existing appropriation for animal care and control, depending on how that contract is structured, you may find cost savings in your arrangement with, with Woodbridge and, and the animal control. Depending on, like I said, if you're sending, if you're paying the shelter in Woodbridge per animal, then this would certainly reduce costs, because you're not, you know, your ACO isn't just trapping any stray cat that's walking around. The only obligation would be to trap any animal that is sick, injured, dying, suspected of being rabid. I mean, that's currently state law that an animal control officer has to participate in. But, you know, sometimes, you know, towns have a, just a monthly fee per basis, so you wouldn't be saving money per animal. But either way, you know, and I spoke with the Woodbridge Animal Shelter earlier, they said, you know, we haven't, not that we know of, we haven't gotten too many kittens or anything from Milltown, and that's, that's a good thing. But if a shelter is just constantly getting animals from your town and you're sending animals, it's really a drain on the community as a whole and the sheltering system, because the animal shelters, you know, they deal with people surrendering pets who can't take care of them anymore, they deal with, you know, sick animals or animals that are found, you know, wandering on the roads. But these cats that would fall under a TNVR program are honestly, I mean, we think, we think about cats, they should be pets, but these cats are really no different than a wild animal. I mean, whether it's a deer walking across someone's lawn, or a raccoon, or a, a, a community cat that's not adoptable and that's not owned, they're essentially wild animals that are roaming around. So, you know, how we manage them and, and deal with it in terms of cats, you know, it's, they get fed by people and caretakers. So, you know, feral cats don't have owners, per se, because they were never adopted. You know, they're not particularly owned, but someone in the community or an organization is their caretaker, so to speak, where they're providing the food and the care for, for, for the animals. So this would kind of regulate that and make it more efficient, I think, for all parties involved.
Any other questions?
Just one.
Yes.
With the program, given that you're releasing, is there an identifier for them?
Yes.
Do they put a microchip in? Is there, you know, an ear piercing or something that, you know, you could identify and say that, that one was already trapped, so we're not chasing around?
It may be a little difficult to see on this. This is a guide for community leaders on effectively managing community cats that we give out to local officials. You can maybe see on this cat's left ear here, it's kind of tipped. So that way, anyone, your police, your ACOs, residents, if they see an ear-tipped cat, that's immediately a sign that that cat has been fixed and it's been vaccinated. So for an ACO, you know, if they see an ear-tipped cat, an animal control officer should not be trapping that cat and transporting it to the shelter unless it's sick or injured or, you know, there's a, there's a particular complaint or concern.
Any other questions? I see none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'll follow up with all of you with an email with some of this information, and, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on this evening's agenda is miscellaneous engineering items.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask my colleague to give our report tonight.
Good evening, colleague.
Good evening. We have a few items to discuss tonight. For the Wilson Avenue improvements, the storm sewer has been installed on the stream side of Janet Court. Storm sewer work has been halted until the directional drilling is complete. We anticipate the directional drilling subcontractor commence to be on-site at the end of next week to begin work within the existing 10-foot easement. Concrete work on Janet Court has been completed, except for some areas that have some tree interference. Next, we have the Department of Public Works complex. Concrete Wall A has been poured at the site, or near the site entrance. Contractor is preparing for other concrete work on-site, including curves and slabs, and they're working on capping various areas throughout the site. They're also trying to sort out locations for the traffic signal due to gas main interference, and building construction is ongoing. Next, we have the Borough's Elevated Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. Tank recoding is complete, except for the Milltown logo. Telecommunications companies are moving back into the tank. Containment has been removed, but scaffolding remains until they finish telecommunications relocations. We're sorting out a schedule for new equipment installation at the Elkins Lane Pumping Station, and the emergency valve for, the emergency valve work in the parking lot in front of the tank has been successfully completed. Lastly, the DOT has announced their 2020 state aid program. The applications are due July 19th, so there are several potential roads within the borough to apply for, and also a potential joint project with Middlesex County. So we're going to suggest that we refer that to the Public Works Committee and meet to discuss that.
You said those are due July 19th?
Yes.
Any questions for the engineer?
What's the scheduled completion date for the water tower? The water tower, is that Memorial Day or after?
It's going to be after Memorial Day now. There are some unforeseen issues, like the, the valve replacement. Expansion joint replacements. And the time to move the telecommunications back into the tank. There should be shortly.
Month or so, maybe?
Okay.
Mike, any chance that we've investigated the line that runs underneath the turnpike? I know in the past, when we've drained the tank, it's resulted in obviously reversal of flow and some brown water there, and suspicions were that possibly that line that runs underneath the turnpike may have some tuberculosis built up inside there. Is it possible for us to investigate that without delaying, you know, putting the tank back online?
Yeah, we will. I think we'll talk to your director. Maybe we can flush the line into the site before we, because the tank is going to force the water in the opposite direction, so. And that, that's an, an ongoing thing, you get water flushing in and out of the tank. But when we put the new tank on, you will get a flush, so we'll, we'll talk to John about flushing. You know, your flushing program is about to go on May 28th, I think, or 29th. So that'll be, it'll be flushed clean, and we'll try to make sure we do a good job on that line.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking if we have to, you know, run scrapers through there if it's possible. You know, depending on how much it's built up. Maybe we could do that, you know, before we throw the tank back online.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a question. You said that the telecommunication companies are putting antennas back on the tank? Are they doing it themselves?
Well, let's just say there's an agreement between the contractor and telecommunication companies. It was quite the effort to try and get all of them moved without attempts to charge the Borough A to move their lines and B to get suspension of their rents. Contractor fortunately made several agreements with them to allow them to place their antennas on his...
antennas back on the tank. Are they doing it themselves?
Well, let's just say, there's an agreement between the contractor and telecommunications companies. It was quite the effort to try and get all of them moved without attempts to charge the Borough A to move their lines, and B to get suspension of their rents. Contractor fortunately made several agreements with them to allow them to place their antennas on his, for lack of a better word, his structure they put in to create the enclosure. We're not sure if the contractor's doing it, or whether telecommunications are doing it. They may have been agreement where he helps them, I'm not sure. But the concern we have, more importantly, is that the cabling inside the tank is done per OSHA standards, and it basically provides Milltown access to the tank. What had happened in the past, some of the communication companies ran their cables in and along the ladder, which makes it easy for them, but not easy for you or someone in the borough to climb the tank. I think that's, that's what our current goal is, to try and coordinate them. You know, obviously, they wanna get their cables in as easy as possible. But you need to be able to allow people to climb that tank, including personnel from your own public works in our office. And that, that's one of the things that we have to look at.
So who's gonna inspect that work to make sure that it's done correctly?
Our office. Well, we have a consultant that's been out there on the tank. He will be inspecting the cabling, and our office will also.
I guess the last question is, as they put these antennas back on, who's gonna be responsible if they cause any damage? If they put things into the, you know, into the tower, scratch it up?
Well, they are responsible. That's the way it works. They, they have been very caucumbrant. I mean, there was a potential for a very large charge from them, and it worked out. Took a while, it worked out, took no kind of damage. So, we'll be out there keeping an eye on it. We have an inspector out there watching the paint, any damage they create, whether they're welding or not, it will be fixed before the tank's done operation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mike, I know this has been in the capital improvement plan for a long time, and people have seen the work going on there for several months, and we approved this last year sometime. So I'm wondering if you could just give a quick synopsis of the reasoning that this was important, and also, you know, the timeline of how long it will last, and why we're required to do this type of work?
Certainly. The first thing to make clear with folks is that the outer casing of that tank is, in fact, the structural part of it. So, it's a little different from some other structures, buildings. The tank is, the painting is not as much an aesthetic issue as it is a structural issue. If the outside or outer shell of that tank is allowed to deteriorate, the tank will begin to corrode, and ultimately will require either significant costs to replace large steel panels, or could even cause the tank to collapse. So, this is not a structure that's your standard building. It's, so the tank, while it had held up, it was 25 years since it was painted, we can't tell you that the paint was performing well at the end of its useful life, because we all know that paint was chipping. And if you were to have ignored that or not given attention, what would have happened ultimately is you would get corrosion in that outside tank, and it becomes significant cost. It would be four times what it costs to just recode the tank. So, that's the first thing. The other thing is, there's also a cathodic protection system that's put on the tank to further extend the useful life of the paint system. And this is your fire protection water. So, it's not a toy, it's there because that provides your backup supply for, let's say, for example, New Brunswick has an issue, we have one-day supply plus in that tank that provides water to your residents without pumping. And if that runs out, we also have extra fire protection there. So, if, God forbid, New Brunswick has a problem again, and their system is off, you have fire protection in that tank to provide you storage for fire in the borough. So, you have interconnections to back those up. But that's why the tank is there. It's a state mandate, it's not that, it's a luxury to Milltown, it's a state mandated requirement. You have sufficient storage for one-day supply, pumped or in the air, or by gravity. This tank was installed so that you didn't have to pump it, because if you have to pump it now, at the same time, you could have an electric problem. So this pump, this is no pump, it just goes by gravity down to your system. So, that's just an overview of why it was necessary. And it's a key thing, and one of the problems is with painting is you don't have another tank. So, your other tank has been taken out of service. So, this one becomes more critical that we do it at a time of year when your water demands are not very high, and we can rely on your interconnections to provide water in event that there's a problem. Long story from an engineer, forgive me, but...
I know, that was a very good explanation. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
We still haven't opened up any of the interconnections, right, for all work?
You have, we have, because New Brunswick asked you to terminate your water use for a day or so. We went to New Brunswick twice, actually, East Brunswick, sorry, East Brunswick twice. And their water came in, and I'm happy to say, without, with very little problems. So they were very gracious. There's a, an interconnection between East Brunswick and Milltown, it's been there for years. Their pressure grade is actually higher than yours. So when the pressure came in, there was, we heard some discolored water complaints from John Ecker, I guess that they contemplated, but it wasn't a large-scale issue. So, which, what did you expect? Because the water comes in from that direction.
And we've taken some other steps, too, with this tank. I mean, while we're on the subject of why we're doing it, we're integrating systems and communications between our intake over at Elkins Lane, as well as with the tank?
That's correct, yes. Some of those are being reestablished.
Right, okay.
Other questions? Hearing none. Audience comments. As a reminder, audience comments are in regard to things that were covered in this evening's agenda. Please use the microphone in the center of the room, state your name and address for identification and the record. Seeing none, close audience comments. Accept motion for adjournment.
So be it.
Second.
Have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take about a five-minute recess.
Good job, ladies.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 20th, 2019 meeting of the Milltown Borough Council. Meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Here.
Councilman Farkas?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Present.
Councilman Legati?
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Here.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the meeting's statement?
Let the minutes reflect the notice of the holding of this regular business meeting. The Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting following forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and St. George Publishing Companies on January 10th, 2019. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by a salute to our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is consideration of minutes. We have minutes from the May 21st, June 11th, June 25th, and July 9th meetings, all in 2018. We'll take one at a time. First, we have the meeting minutes from May 21, 2018. You've had the opportunity to review the minutes. What is your pleasure?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Ravelinski, that the minutes are approved as typed. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we have the minutes of the June 11th, 2018 council meeting. You've had the opportunity to read the minutes. What is your pleasure?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the minutes are approved as typed. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we have the minutes of the July 9, 2018 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the minutes are approved as typed. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we have the minutes of the July 9, 2018 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed.
I second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the minutes are approved as typed. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next on the agenda, we have audience comments and questions on the resolutions and bills and claims listed on the agenda. If you have any comments or questions, please use the microphone in the center of the room, give your name and address for the record when recognized. Remember, comments and questions are limited to the resolutions and bills and claims listed on this evening's agenda. With that, I will open audience comment. Seeing none, I will close audience comments. Next on the agenda is bills and claims. Will the clerk please read Resolution 19-146 by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of eighty-three thousand, five hundred, seventy-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
A motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next we have the reports of standing committees and introduction of resolutions. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the eight resolutions listed on this evening's agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 19-149.
Any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 19-151, 52, 53, and 54.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 155 as well.
Okay, with that, will the clerk please read the consent agenda? As a reminder, we're voting for all but 19-149, 51, pardon me, 151, 152, 153, 154, and 155.
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion? Pardon me, there is no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Okay, next will the clerk please read Resolution 19-149 by title only, please?
Authorizing certain personnel actions, recreation, sack, and pool.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Councilman Legati, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have another question, a question for July 1st. The minimum wage goes up for the non-seasonal positions, correct? Are we gonna have to go revisit this again for the regular personnel and provide another increase? How does that work? We don't have to? Okay.
Any other questions? Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ravelinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk, please read Resolution 19-151 by title, please?
Resolution canceling unexpended 2018 appropriation reserves.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Ravelinski, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can someone just explain where the money's coming? Yes, Mr. Mayor. Can someone just explain where the money's coming from and where the money's going?
This is money that was appropriated in twenty eighteen but never spent, so you would need a resolution to cancel that so that we could count it as revenue or so it could go to fund balance to be used in the current year's budget.
Okay, so in twenty eighteen it was used for what project? For what, what was it used for?
I don't know that it was a specific project. It was...
It was just budgetary items. Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't need to use. It was budgetary items in the water and sewer budget?
Correct.
And, and what is it go, and it's, it's coming from the water and sewer budget, but it's going into the current fund?
No. No, it's water and sewer.
Water and sewer fund balance. A water and sewer fund?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
So there was seventy thousand left over. I thought last year we talked about having a lot of water main breaks and things of that nature that drove us to have a shortfall. I'm wondering where that, an extra amount came from.
So typically you would budget monies for, and correct me if I'm wrong, this line item was the... One fifty-one, right? This was probably... Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, so typically you owe, you budget monies for capital outlay for projects that you might have, that might come up throughout the year. So in this instance, the money wasn't utilized. In the twenty nineteen budget, we still have amounts budgeted for those purposes, even though we have not listed any that, you know, we're going to undertake. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution nineteen dash one five two by title only, please?
Resolution for setting forth reason for delay of introduction of municipal budget for twenty nineteen.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Revulinski, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So what is the reason?
Mayor, do you want to answer?
I think it's pretty well laid out.
It's just about the delay.
Yeah, there, there was a couple of things that occurred last year, administrator CFO leaving, myself coming on and, and a part-time basis, and just getting the, the books closed at the end of the year and moving forward to getting the numbers together for the budget process. It took a little longer than what we had anticipated, and basically that's, that's the reason for the delay. We like to do a resolution just outlining that, there were those reasons and get, and send it down with the state.
Okay, I think there was a few times I had heard something about, we were waiting for some, something from New Brunswick about some, for them to finalize their numbers. Did that, did that ever occur?
We, we have gotten some numbers from the engineer and the, I believe she, she's the director of water utility, so we have some finalized numbers. That's what we're basing some things on. I still have some questions that I want to follow up with them, but we do, they did give us certification of final numbers. And to me, it's better than what we thought, so.
So what were we, what date were we targeting to have the budget approved?
We, you always hope to have an introduction in, in March and April, you know, that timeframe. A lot of, a lot of towns don't like to do an introduction or an adoption, more so an adoption of the budget until the state certifies state aid. Now those numbers are certified. However, you won't get any tax certification until the state budget is adopted, which I'm projecting is not going to be June, well, might be June thirtieth for the July first date, but that, they're having some discussions down at the state about the, about their budget. So we won't get a, any kind of tax certification until the state budget is adopted.
So was there any problems with it? I was wondering, because we've been getting reports and I thought everything was moving along. It was just...
No, it's, it's, you know, they, they have statutory dates that are extended by the director. We, you know, you just, it's, it's a formality thing that you, you like to say, sorry, director, we're a little late, here's our reasons. But it, again, to me, in recent years, the state does not certify any tax rates until the state budget is adopted, and that hasn't happened, I think, before June twentieth in many years. So to me, the, it, it is, it's really immaterial, because i- if you pass a budget in February, you still may have to send out estimated tax bills because you don't have a tax rate.
Any other questions? Will the clerk call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution nineteen dash one five three by title only, please?
A resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown supporting the submission of application for twenty nineteen New Jersey urban and community forestry stewardship grant.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Revulinski, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I, I thought there was no shade tree committee anymore.
There is a shade tree committee. There's just no volunteers. On every, now the only person appointed is the council liaison.
So we have a committee with no members, only a council liaison?
That is how they...
That's not much of a committee.
We're required to have one by statute, aren't we?
No.
But I, I guess the question is, how can you have a committee with no members?
Weren't we, weren't we looking to appoint the, the heads of each department?
We're looking into it with the attorney right now to draft an ordinance to change the composition of the shade tree committee. We're looking at the legality of it before it's proposed to council.
Okay, so, and then some like, it's, this is, this grant is up to ten thousand dollars, but it doesn't mean it's going to be ten thousand dollars, for the four things that are listed here, but I think those are four things that we kind of do as, in the course of our, the jobs that are done here anyway. So I'm not really following, what's the point of applying for a grant to do for something that we already do as, of course, the utilities department and the public works department does as, of course, of their jobs anyway?
Yes, the process currently is to fill out the application, and once the application's filled out, it was submitted to me in the past to provide a permit number. In the meantime, all applications are now being sent to public works at the present time. We aren't changing from the current list. We're not adding people until we're done with what we're completing for tree removal. What this process will do is have someone to physically come in to assess each and every tree that needs to be addressed on the right of way for the borough, throughout the twenty-seven lanes throughout the town. And, and this way, we will know going forward. It gets compiled like our previous books of planner, planning has been done. We've had a, a community forest plan, a forestry plan, so that's what this is, what it's going to do. And it's going to be able to provide us with the opportunities to apply for future grants, whether it's Sustainable Jersey or other companies or foundations that have these grants. And that's what this is going to do. So it does give you a risk assessment for the trees and right away on people's properties within the parks as well. So this way, it'll be, each and every tree would be assessed. And then you would have a timeframe that there's nothing wrong with it. These are the trees that need to be addressed at some future time. And that's why you can start planning. This is all according to planning. That's what the booklet would be for. And we've had four previous ones, thanks to the Shade Tree Commission. The final one was in two thousand thirteen. It expired in two thousand sixteen, and it's a four-year plan that, it gives you a four-year date plan.
Any other questions?
Well, not done yet. And what, what's the anticipated additional funds that would be needed? Because it says here in the ordinance, in the resolution, excuse me, that the borough would be responsible for additional funds.
If it's, like, right now Ralph does take trees down that are not in the power lines or affected by gas lines or water lines, then he has been removing trees. He can still do that, and that would be the in-kind labor match to the ground.
Okay.
So you can use those hours that he's taken trees down physically to offset the grant, so it's not a dollar amount being on the grant to match.
I, I don't see anything in here that says in-kind contributions. I just see additional funds. My, my point in this is that there's really no point in applying for grants if we get grant money and then are the additional funds cost more than the grant. We didn't, we didn't get anything. So that's my concern, because I think that's happened the last couple of times. We got some grants, but the, there were engineering fees, there were other fees that kind of came on that offset the, the value of the grant. So my concern is, if we're already doing this as part of the, the work that happens at the borough, why apply for a grant and then take the chance of spending additional money to offset the grant?
The process right now is based on the homeowner, the applicant, on a tree that they feel needs to be addressed. It's not us physically going out and looking at trees. And trust me, when I went out there looking at trees, there are several more that need to be addressed. I did not put them on the list. I just made notations. And some people don't want the trees down. You have the pin oaks. Someday, they, they will all come down. It needs to be a process, and with the plan, it's really beneficial to have the plan.
So what's the process if the homeowner doesn't want their tree down?
They just indicate that to Ralph and they leave it alone, and he's looking into it with John Bruder to make sure they sign off on it, so that if it's something in the future that occurs, it's been addressed and they refuse to have it removed.
So it, it would be the same if we have the grant, right? They come in, they say this tree is a danger. The homeowner says, no, I still want it.
And if it's on the borough right away, then we, if it's a danger, then I would think we would just address it at that point.
Why can't we do that now?
It sounds to me like this is just the same type of grant that, that we usually go for. We, we ask the state for money and then, or, or any entity for that matter, we ask them for some money to help us move along with our agenda. So if they're helping offset the costs and it costs us a little bit more to create a plan for moving forward, so we don't have residents saying, how do you decide which tree gets done? Well, we're doing the ones according to the plan that need to be done that identify which ones are the bad ones, then that, that's good business. I mean, we, it's something we should be doing anyway, so if someone's going to give us some money to do it, then great. I think Councilman Farkas brings up a good point with the in-kind labor, which I'd like to know if that is something in the language of the grant that we can confirm in order to put that in resolution, but all in all, I think, you know, going for a grant and trying to get some money to help us out to plan for the future is, is a good move.
To plan for the future, but also to address what we are doing now and have been doing with the Shade Tree Committee for how many years? Fifteen? Twenty?
Well, it also gives us strength and liability, because we're acknowledging the issue that we have, and right now, we're liable, because we don't have a Shade Tree Commission. As a Shade Tree Committee, we have to address it and see if we want to go that route again as Shade Tree Commission. Right now, I've taken the core training. I'm indemnified from it. I have my certification, which I have to submit. Now, that certification stays with the town. Whatever happens to me, if I move, you know, in the future, doesn't matter, it stays with the town, so they get those credits for the core training. And then what you need to do is also for the BA, is continually train the public works, make sure that at least one or two people in your municipality has the training as well. But it does stay with the municipality once they're trained. And it's also to get future grants. If we want to do park improvements, beautification, tree plantings or tree removals, that's what this whole thing is. How can I put in a grant for tree removal if I only have the Excel spreadsheet? The plan gives you that backing for the municipality even to partner with other municipalities to move forward and grow that support, be it shared services with another town on their shade tree or outsourcing it to another contractor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I get in there for a second? I'm not sure.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm not, with all due respect to everyone who spoke on this, I think we might be getting a little off track on what we're doing as far as shade tree and what this actual grant is doing. Um, I think if, if we can get ten thousand dollars, that's fine, no problem. I have a big problem with the whereas portion of the grant. The Borough of Milltown would be responsible for any additional funds needed to complete the project if the grant is awarded. The way I understand that to be is that if we hire someone, if we don't do it in-house, if we hire someone to do any of these four things and we exceed ten thousand dollars, then we're responsible for the rest. And I don't think, I, I think that the wording on this should be not to exceed ten thousand dollars and that we should not be, that this project should end if we go anywhere past ten thousand dollars, because we've gotten burnt with previous grants that we've, it, it's cost us almost as much as the grant was awarded in, in something along these lines. I, I, you know, I understand the process that goes on, what Ralph is doing. I understand that, you know, God bless it, Dorian is going and getting all the certifications that we need. I think those are two separate things. I think that this grant is not worded properly and that we could get caught having to pay more than anything else, and, and that's what I have a problem with right now. I think we should really focus on this grant and, and that, yes, we can get ten thousand dollars to do these four things, and some of these four things we can do in-house, but if we go out of house and we pay more than ten thousand dollars, if someone, if, if a company's in the middle of it and it says, oh, it's another five grand to finish it, we're on the hook for half of this grant already. And I think that's where maybe, can the wording be changed? That it's not to exceed ten thousand dollars and that we're not of, uh, responsible for the rest? I'm not sure if I, if we can do that, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, if, if I may, Councilman, this is, this is Eric here.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you. I, I, I like where you're going with this. Um, I, I think that what we're looking to do here tonight is to apply for a grant, and I think if the grant comes in up to ten thousand, say it comes in at five thousand, then when we go out and actually go to contract someone, that's when you put in the language that says not to exceed whatever that amount is that we receive, unless the council decides that they want to do something else. But I think that's when the, when the, in your contractual process is when you come up with the do not exceed, um, language. So...
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't really foresee a problem with applying for the grant. Uh, we may not get anything. We may get whatever, and then at that point in time, it will be, the language could go into as not to exceed. Would that be correct, uh?
Yes.
Mr. BA and, Ms. BA and Mr. CFO?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. That, that would be on the affirmative, Nick, since you're not here.
All right. Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that clarification and I agree with that completely.
No problem. Any other questions?
So I agree, you know, I'm never going to say no to grant money, because it's free for us. However, I just wanted to follow up on my question that I don't, I don't think I got an answer to, which was if, right now it's in the borough right of way and Ralph goes and says he's going to cut it down and the homeowner says no, what happens then?
Right now, the borough attorney is reviewing that, so that we can get that straightened out with the homeowner, so that there is a sign off on it, so that they're aware that they stopped this. And we went to the next property on the list that was on the current list.
But if...
That he has to keep working and not stopping.
If according to the list, it's a danger and it's in the borough right of way and they refuse to let us...
It will be removed.
Okay, but thank you. That's was where I was going with that.
Whether they want it or not, it will be removed. If it's a danger, it will be removed.
Yeah, if it's a danger.
To the borough right of way.
Okay, right.
We have that decision, not double ours.
And then the other thing that you said was you're not adding any trees to the inventory at all?
Nope. Not until we get done with, no, we're not adding any other new applications, because most of them... because most of them, I already looked at them. They're already on the list. But it's not like I'm going to give preference to somebody who just gave it to us this year.
No, I'm not a preference, but why...
He reviewed it, and it's a hazard. That's, it's in Ralph's hands to make that decision. That's what we did. We signed off on it. And if it is a danger, that tree comes down. If not, it's okay. There's time.
How long is that going to go on?
Just until the first funding is exhausted.
Because if somebody has a tree that's dying, and they're not on the list, they're precluded from being added to the list?
Right now, he's just finishing up.
So he can't add to the bottom of the list?
Oh, we will be, yes.
When? Why can't they do it now?
I haven't met them yet.
I think of the discussion is that if someone has a tree, that's a problem. It's imminent of being a danger. It will be removed. However, any new trees that are added to the list that are, I would like the tree removed, they're not a high priority. They're going to the bottom, and they're not going to be included in the monies that we presently have to cut down trees. Have you heard?
Yeah, but that's not what you said. You said that the list is closed.
Well, he's not sharing it, updating it and sharing it with everybody right now, because...
No, but if I called up and said, "I have a dead tree on my, on the borough right of way", I could get added to a list?
He would certainly do so. Look at that tree to confirm that you said it's a dead tree. Correct. And then he would address it and work on it. Right, it's still open in that respect, on only dangerous trees. If it's just, oh, well, you know, it's time for my tree to come down, so to speak. He put, and he doesn't note that it's a dangerous tree. It's not a huge issue or an emergency. It's going on to the bottom list. And that's it. That's all it's doing. But he's not calling everybody to tell everybody, "You're going on the bottom list", which I don't think he has the time.
That's not what I asked. I just wanted to know, do we have an active or inactive list? That's all.
It's active.
It's still active.
It's active, but unless it's going to, it's in an imminent danger, it's going to be on hold on the bottom of the list.
Correct.
And where do we stand with the actions?
I'm waiting for, after Memorial Day, we're going to sit down and review it and update it. And we'll have all the invoices and costs. I know it's been about $70,000. It's probably a little over that now. But some things are coming up where they're supposed to come this week, and they only come one or two days. Sometimes they skip, and then they come back, so it's been on hold sometimes.
Do we know how many trees we got down so far?
Over 70, right now. That was about 10 days, two weeks ago.
Okay. Any more on the grant submission?
Yeah, I just, I just, one more thing. I just want to be sure that, I want to make my point clear. I don't have a problem with applying for a grant. I have a problem with a committee with no members, that the only member is a councilperson applying for a grant. I think that's a big problem. I think it sets a bad precedent. And I think it's a conflict of interest, quite frankly. So I can't support applying for a grant for a committee with no members. That's basically it.
Borough Attorney, do you have any input on that?
I'm also the Middlesex County Urban Forestry Representative for Milltown. So I go to events. I take webinars. Go to workshops.
Mr. Attorney, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Obviously, I'm just covering for John Bruder. Tonight, I'm sort of speaking for myself here. But I would say that there's plenty of, usually committees have certain requirements as to how many members there should be, and sometimes they're by statute, and sometimes they're by whoever the township sets forth. It depends what kind of a committee it is. And frankly, off the top of my head, I'm not sure about shade tree commissions. I think you can choose to have one, and then if you do, I think maybe you do have to have a certain amount of members for it. So I think Mr. Fark, Councilman Farkas raises a good point. I think we should definitely get clarification on that before you finalize the grant. I would probably hold off if there's not a deadline, and probably put that forward a month from now to make sure. When I was Deputy County Counsel for Somerset County, and there was a danger with a tree in the county right of way, we attended to a letter to the resident saying, "Can you please remove the tree or the bush, wherever it might be? You know, the sightlines are being impacted, especially in your schools. Give them a certain amount of time, then maybe a second letter. And then, you know, you would say in the letter, "We might bill you if we had to go out there and remove the tree ourselves." I'm not sure if you guys do that. It's a little bit more of an aggressive tact, but might be a way for you guys to save money in the budget. Hard to collect sometimes, but sometimes the fear of that, because you say, "If we're going to do it, we're going to do it at our cost, and maybe they could do it themselves at a cheaper cost", and it creates people taking action. So those are the only two things I could think of, you know.
So my question more for you was, is there a problem? We can go ahead and apply for the grant, but is it a problem that we're asking in the resolution to have a committee that, do we have a statute for the committee?
An ordinance or a statute?
Statute stating about what...
Is it a statutory committee, is the question, or an advisory committee?
Just an advisory committee.
If it's an advisory committee, then you wouldn't have a statutory requirement.
So I guess my question to you is, are we bound by the wording in the resolution when we go to have the grant? Like, if we don't have a committee, the resolution is saying the Shade Tree Committee is requesting authorization?
Well, I'd say you currently do have a commission, right?
Not a committee.
No, just a committee, which is an advisory.
Sorry. You currently have, so it's an advisory committee? Then there would be no statute under New Jersey that would say you have to have a certain number of members? But you might have internal dialogue, might have an internal document that says so, you know.
Is there a deadline for the grant application?
Yes, May 29th.
I'm wondering why then we don't, could it be the Public Works Department that requests a grant?
Most towns do that. You got that for New Brunswick, East Brunswick, North Brunswick now.
Can I say one other thing?
More and more going towards public works.
An advisory committee can never take action anyway, can only recommend. So the conflict of interest piece of it doesn't really concern me. So I think, I think knowing now that it is an advisory committee, I just wasn't sure off the top of my head if it was statutory or not. I think you're probably okay. But you might want to check with John Bruder just to double check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Gabriella, is this a advisory committee for the Shade Tree, or is it just a Shade Tree Committee?
I'm assuming since it's not a commission, it would be an advisory.
Yes, that's correct.
I believe it is advisory.
Which means in the end, it all, the decisions are all made by council.
If I may?
Sure, please.
If I remember, several years ago, this came before council, it was a Shade Tree Commission. And they want, they voted to change and to abolish the Shade Tree Commission, who reported to no one, and change it to a Shade Tree Committee.
It's an opt-in by statute, but if you opt in and have it, then it's required.
That was all they did. They had it, abolished it, because it did not report to anybody. By making it a committee, it reported to the mayor and council.
Yeah, well, councilperson, mayor, what my confusion was, whether it was a commission or whether it was a, you know, an advisory committee. With that clarification, you can strike a lot of what I said, unfortunately.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkas.
No.
Councilwoman Curver.
Aye.
Councilwoman Legati.
No.
Councilwoman Mayor.
No.
Councilwoman Revulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have three ayes and three noes.
And as long as when the contract goes out, it says not to exceed, I vote aye.
And we have four ayes and three noes.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution 19-154 by title, please?
Authorization to execute an agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority for release of liability in regards to received donation of vehicles.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Revulinski, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, well, let's see. I have a couple of questions. But the first one is, what's the police department going to do with a golf cart?
I do believe they can...
I can kind of answer that, but I do not want to speak of what the police department.
Okay.
I believe one of the reasons that they requested the cart was for such events as the Fourth of July Committee. It's easier to get around town, when the Fourth of July Parade's going on, and the whatever other work they do. Also, any other functions in town, where they get down to the parks, little league games, whatever. It's easier to get in and out, sometimes with traffic, with a small electric cart that can drive on the sidewalk. And that's, and I'm saying that's the only thing I've heard. I'm not part of that decision-making, but that's what I heard.
Councilman Legati, do you have anything on that, considering you're for public safety?
I, the first I saw with it was Saturday afternoon, so I have absolutely nothing to offer you.
Well, things I could, I could jump in, Councilman, is that I know in the past, pretty much every time we have an event, it is requested from the county to borrow a golf cart, which then has to be trucked in from one of the golf courses that the county owns. And we use it for a day or two for the event, and then it's trucked back. So I'm guessing they probably are getting some new golf carts. And instead of them having to send a crew of guys in a vehicle over, they probably figured, "Well, let's just get rid of the golf cart. We can save ourselves time and money. And let's be, let these guys have one." My question more is, is in the resolution itself, fourth whereas, I don't understand the fat line. Is that something that might have been left over from something else?
I put it in your changes packet. It was changed by the paper player. I changed it on the...
So that's out?
That's out. It was changed.
Oh, yeah. I was just a little confused there. No problem.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm guessing.
So this is just a golf cart at no cost to the borough?
Yeah. It would appear to me that it's a golf cart that they're donating to us for use for the police department for special events.
Now, is there any way to keep tabs on what it's going to cost us to get this, A, this golf cart into shape, B, maybe, you know, lettered or painted, and things along those lines? I would like to, you know, if it's for the police department or for the borough to use or whatever, you know, I just saw it on Saturday. I have no information. If, if I can get some of those numbers as we proceed, I have no problem with not having the county truck in something, and we could have something of our own. But I'd really like to keep tabs on what it actually costs us to keep it, maintenance up to speed and getting it to Milltown lettering and stuff like that.
Sure. I just have two more points. To Council President Dixon's point, I understand that. But correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a $35,000 ATV sitting around that we spent a lot of money for to do exactly what you described. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the meeting, the last meeting we had with the young people from, from the school, who did a fantastic job, by the way, was part of one of the reports that we had gotten some other vehicles. So, I mean, are we going to open a used car lot? Because where are all these vehicles going to be stored? That's really ultimately my question. We have, we have a parking lot behind the police station that's full of vehicles that we roll out one day a year, and now we're going to get a couple more, a golf cart. Where's the golf cart going to be stored?
I imagine it'll be eventually stored in the new Public Works building.
And what about these other, these other vehicles? Excuse me, if anybody knows anything about them. We're going to get free vehicles, but what are we going to do with them? You know, there's, there's a, there's a big problem. I don't work here in the borough, but I'm sure the people that work in the borough hear it from the residents who come here who can't park in the parking lot. And we're going to be loading up with golf carts and free vehicles? Come on.
Any other questions? Will the clerk call the roll?
Council President Dixon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkas.
No.
Councilwoman Curver.
Aye.
Councilwoman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Revulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have five ayes and one no.
So moved. Will the clerk please read Resolution 19-155 by title only, please?
Authorization to award Contract to FirstNet for purchase of wireless plan and smartphone under State Contract Number T216A82584 in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Hey, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Curver, seconded by Council President Dixon, that this resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if someone could elaborate on this particular resolution, because it's the first I'm seeing of it. I'd just like to know a little bit more about it. If anybody could explain, I'm not sure if they can or can't.
Sure, Councilman Legati, this is Jeanette. We're looking to switch cellphone service providers. The borough currently uses Verizon. And with me coming on board and trying to obtain a cellphone for borough use, it was brought to my attention that FirstNet, which is an AT&amp;T provider, offers a better service for about the same price that we're already paying. And what it also does is it allows emergency service. So in the event of any catastrophe that might bring the cellphone service down, we would have priority service, so we would never lose cell service. So it seemed like a no-brainer to switch if it's the same amount of money and you're getting a better service. This was what was decided to do.
Now, did I hear you correctly in that there was a cost savings? I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's, no, it's actually, I wish it was a cost savings, but it's about the same amount of money. I think it's, if anything, it's about, I think, overall, maybe $500 over the, over the entire year difference in price.
Okay, and you're saying that the service would be better?
Exactly.
Is there any testing that needed to be done, that we don't have any dead spots or anything like that?
No, it's, typically, it's, you know, we had Verizon. It's AT&amp;T. From what I understand, we've had some issues with Verizon to begin with, with some of the coverage, and that AT&amp;T didn't foresee any problems.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation.
Sure.
How many phones are in that plan?
Is it 12?
I think it's 12.
You have it right.
No, I didn't put it. I think it's 12 phones.
Yeah.
I believe it's 12.
And that goes to, like, department heads and the...
Right, and OEM and, yeah, recreation, DPW.
Correct me if, I believe I'm correct. We've also offered this plan, which the borough was not paying for naturally, but the First Day Squad and the Fire Department has also gone on this plan.
Correct.
Because of the obligation of the company, or the statement by the company, that if anything such as 9/11 should happen again, our first responders would have priority, as would our police department using these phones.
Absolutely.
And everybody else for the tower service. Is that correct?
That is correct. And also, what I neglected to mention is that, and then employees of the borough would be considered a tier two. So if they contracted with AT&amp;T, that they would also get a tier two level, where obviously the borough phones are tier one, but, yeah, employees would be entitled to tier two.
Well, a question for Councilman Dixon, if you know. If the police, or the fire department has had it, and rescue squad has had this, was it in effect during...
They've just gone to it.
Oh, okay.
They're going to it as we're speaking.
Okay. Jeanette, has anyone utilized this during Sandy, so we can understand?
It wasn't, it wasn't an...
No, it's a result of, it's a result of that.
This is a new program that they've come up with.
Okay.
So do we know what percentage of the personnel have used the cellphones now?
So what I have conveyed to the department heads that do, so from the listing of cellphones, the department heads that do have the phones, I have recommended and encouraged that they now utilize, you know, maybe they were using their personal phone, and they had the borough phone, but they weren't necessarily using the borough phone. So I have recommended and encouraged that, you know, we're getting the new service. This is a good time to now, that's where all the borough business should be conducted through. We have, you know, it's unlimited minutes, messages. We have a fixed cost per month. And really, for the protection of, for Oprah, reasons of Oprah, and other reasons, they should utilize the borough phones. And I know that they have already started, some of the employees have already taken steps to use that practice.
So ideally, then, everyone would have that cellphone on them while they're out working, so they can communicate in an emergency.
Exactly.
So we brought this up, I actually brought this up last year when I was on the Finance Committee, and we just spent $110,000 on new radios. And I had a question, why we couldn't just have everyone use a cellphone?
So in talking to, to Mike from OEM, at some point in the future, there is the ability for some of the phones to be used as radios. So instead of maybe replacing future radios, we'll hopefully be able to switch over to the phones.
Okay, great.
Like the old direct connect?
Yeah.
Hey, we had those in the past. I don't know why they went away from them, because I used to just have the, like, walkie-talkies.
Well, I think, you know, there's different frequencies and channels and all of that. and now they're making the phones that they're able to be used in both ways, so that's the thought process behind it.
But also, I was in, talking to Ralph at the Public Works, he's tried so many times to use a cellphone, and just, half the time he would call me on something, it would just not work. The phones would just not work, so.
Well...
AT&amp;T, I have AT&amp;T, and I've had little to no issues.
Any other questions?
Well, let's hope that continues.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Valinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next, we move to the report of the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, chaired by Council President Ronald Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only thing I have this evening is that later on, we will be introducing the 2019 budget, and it will be, final hearing will be in June, or hearing on it will be in the June meeting, just the introduction will be occurring tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Dixon?
The introduction and a public hearing will occur on June 24th.
24th.
With a possible adoption.
Very good. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Next is the Department of Public Safety, chaired by Councilman Nicholas Legati. Nick, anything from afar?
Yes, I have a Milltown Fire Department report, Mr. Mayor. All right, Milltown Fire Department monthly report through May 15, 2019. Total number of fire calls, eight. Total number of training details, two. Total number of work details, four. Total number of meeting details, one. Total number of miscellaneous details, two, for total incidents for the month of 17. Just so everybody is aware, we also had two mutual aid calls this month that the Milltown Fire Department responded to other municipalities. Okay, live fire training at the County Fire Academy on May 19. They had five members attend to training at the Fire Academy throughout this month. Memorial flags were placed on graves of deceased members at local cemeteries. PM service on ladder 73 has been completed. Currently working on finding replacement vehicle for Assistant Chief's car, and that concludes my report for tonight, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we will hear from the Department of Utilities, chaired by Councilwoman Trina Mayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The full report was given last time, and I heard that the eighth graders did a wonderful job. I'm sorry I missed it, but I got really good feedback about it. I just wanted to highlight a few things that were going on. The hydrant flushing will commence on May 28, that's the day after Memorial Day. They will tie into the East Brunswick via the interconnect and shut down our booster station in Elkins Lane, isolating the town from New Brunswick Transmission Line. A few weeks back, as we stated earlier, there was an emergency repair, and they did the same thing, and there was only one low-pressure call and no dirty water calls. We flushed the transmission line for most of the day and returned everything to normal at the end of the day. The flushing will occur 11:00 PM that evening, 5:28, will begin flushing nightly from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM daily until completed. There will be information signs, there's information on the website about it. Also, if you ever hear of anyone that does get any kind of laundry stain, we have packets of a special agent that removes discoloration or rust, it's in the office, utility office during the flushing. So remember, flushing is done twice a year. It is routine maintenance to expel harmless sediment from the distribution piping, it is a requirement of the DEP. Discolored water occurs during flushing because it is supposed to. We are attempting to stir everything up and flush out the hydrants. Flushing is a great way to ensure that our fire hydrants are functional. Reddish discolored water doesn't look appealing, but it is harmless. If there is ever a suspected health issue with water, any resident affected will receive a boil water notice immediately. No effort would be spared to isolate and correct issues immediately as well. Our new licensed water operator is working hard in conjunction with the utility department to make sure we deliver safe, clean drinking water to all residents. Please direct your questions and concerns to the utility office, we are here to help. And on another note, Mr. Mayor, we did meet with the DEP last month. Mr. McClellan and I are attempting to have the DEP come and speak to us about the outcome of that meeting, and once the dark borough engineer sets that up, I'd like to do a special meeting regarding just the water, if possible. So we'll see if we can do it in conjunction with another meeting, if not, we may have to schedule a separate meeting to, and have, open it up to the public to ask questions and have any of their concerns, questions, issues addressed as far as the water utility goes.
Very good. Anything else?
Oh, sorry, no, that, well, I'll be putting a meeting of the utility committee probably on for the next week or so, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Department of Public Works and Recycling, chaired by Councilwoman Dorian Kerber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borough council meeting, Monday, May 20, along with all curbside collections. DPW has the following report. Seven Public Works employees attended a chainsaw safety class. Four Public Works employees participated in stormwater management practices and maintenance. DPW Director, along with representatives from CME, have completed the annual stormwater report, and it has been submitted to the DEP. Tree removals and stump griddings are ongoing. Public Works assisted utilities with downed tree branches that took out power on Sunday, May 10, at Willow and Cleveland. Public Works also assisted utilities department by providing an operator and three librarians to address a small collapsed section of a road on Ackerman Avenue due to a pipe failure. Reminder, recycling is this Thursday, do not include plastic bags, I've seen your containers remain and be uncollected. They will not collect your recycling containers from them if you have plastic, no more plastic bags, make sure it's number one. Number two, anything else, they will discriminate and just leave it there. We are working on getting those wonderful handouts, we're gonna mark them up for the reason, for us not picking it up, but in the meantime, until those are printed and available, which is the orders in place, those cards that I have, it's like a half-size of, you know, this type of sheet, please keep the plastic bags out of the recycling containers, because I saw last time, some were not picked up. On Monday, May 27, your garbage pickup will be Tuesday, May 28.
We're sorry, your call did not go through, please try your call again, thank you.
I think he's trying to hint.
I actually just found out because it's fine.
I have it.
He just tours.
I have it, we...
That's not AT&amp;T, is it?
I tour.
Good lord, I hope not.
They found out we voted against it, they voted on the third.
Oh wait, yeah, can redial. Okay.
That was quick.
Continue.
Well, he's done with his report for now. Yeah. Hold back and dial.
Redial.
So you can use the...
I don't know what happened, but I got dropped off that call.
Welcome back.
Sorry about that.
I didn't touch anything.
There you go. Councilwoman, are you done with your report?
Oh no, I'm not done yet. So, I just wanted to let everybody know, keep middle six moving, I was unable to attend last Wednesday, I had to go to work, but we had a little event, actually was handing out of awards, and I received via mail a bronze for 2019, Level of Recognition for New Jersey Safe Routes to School, honoring the commitment and support of the program by encouraging children to walk and bicycle to school. The last previous, you know, the previous two years, both Barbara Wright with the Girl Scouts, as well as Chief Brian Cannelli, they have been conducting their bike rodeos, which is bike safety. So we did receive this for their efforts, and also they did the walk last year, so that was included. I've included all the documents necessary to get this award and recognition for the town.
Very good, congratulations.
Number two, we got a second award, for the Streets Smart Campaign and the community outreach that we had done. I appreciate everyone's efforts we have for standing achievement in creating programs that provide and promote community options for employees, and this is presented to the Borough of Milltown for 2019, for New Jersey Smart Workplaces, recognizing New Jersey's finest companies.
Very good.
And I have been going to the Green Infrastructure Champion, we have two more sessions, then I'll receive my certification. The next session is on master plans. I did speak with Toby Horton, who was at the session, he did complete a Green Infrastructure Master Plan, and we'll be scheduling that meeting in June, so that we can review everything, and I'll invite the business administrator to join me. I think it's exciting, we never had this in our master plan, so whatever we need to do, resolutions or whatever, to accept it, have the engineer review everything, I guess, whatever the process, because it's new for me as well, I'm very excited that that portion will be completed for our future master plan. In addition, just want to make sure I cover everything. That's those three. Yes, that completes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, chaired by Councilman Randy Farkas.
Thank you. No report tonight, but just a quick reminder that the Free Raids Clinic will be held tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, right here at Borough Hall, right here, right here by the front door. So if you have an animal that you'd like to get vaccinated, by all means stop by. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That's tomorrow, Councilman?
Tomorrow night, yes.
Beautiful, thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from the Department of Recreation, chaired by Councilman Richard Revolinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same report as last week, when the kids were here, doing a bang-up job, they really got through things well. SAC reminders, summer SAC registration deadline, May 24. There is a late fee, so the summer SAC registration deadline is May 24. SAC program is still hiring for adult and SAC aides and managers, both age groups for summer SAC and school year SAC. There will be a SAC parent meeting on Monday, June 24, at 7:00 PM at Borough Hall. There will be a summer SAC parent meeting, Monday, June 24, at 7:00 PM here at Borough Hall. This is for all the folks to get familiar with the SAC program, meet the staff, and get information about First Day, and make sure things go smoothly. Recreation and pool information, all summer applicants will receive their employment letter by the end of May, this is for recreation, pool, and SAC. Albert Avenue Summer Recreation Registration forms are available. We have sent a courtesy email to all past participants, requested an email blast be sent out to the schools, and have submitted a form to the website for approval posting as well. Pool membership sales will begin May 20 through May 24, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Borough Pool. That's May 20 to May 24, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Borough Pool. Recreation Committee meeting will be meeting on Wednesday, June 19, which, hey, that happened. We met, we were interviewing some people, we approved quite a bit of people for the summer program, for SAC, and for the park, and for the pool this evening, and our next meeting will be held in July on the third Wednesday of the month. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Councilman, the SAC meeting that was scheduled to be at Borough Hall, I imagine that's gonna be well-attended, was that going to be in council chambers?
Yes.
Then we just changed our council meeting to June 24.
Good. We'll have more attendees, and we'll make that correction. Thanks for catching that.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, pardon me, on the agenda is introductions, and this evening is the budget resolution. Now, I would ask the clerk, how do we handle this? This is not an ordinance, correct?
It's not, but it is treated almost like an ordinance, so you would make a motion to adopt upon first reading and publish according to law to be had a public hearing set for June 24, the same as you would for an ordinance, but just replace ordinance with resolution.
Okay. Next, on the agenda is the introduction of a resolution for the municipal budget. Will the clerk please read the resolution, please?
Municipal budget notice.
There you go.
That's exciting.
You've heard the reading, the extensive reading of this resolution. We will be handling the motion as you would in ordinance, please take out the word ordinance and put in the word resolution.
Got it. I move that this resolution be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on June 24 at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Kerber, that the resolution be adopted on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, June 24, 7:00 PM, Borough Hall. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to address Council President Dixon, Chair of the Finance Committee, and if you could please notify the public that there has not been a Finance Committee meeting for almost two months, nor has there been a public meeting on the budget in 2019. If you could confirm that, then I would like to move forward.
Well, there has been budget meetings, and I think, Randy, if you want to address that, we've had meetings.
Yeah, our last meeting was the first Thursday of May?
I don't remember the date, but we've had, I know two of us, myself and Councilwoman Kerber, were present.
May 9?
Yeah, that sounds right.
The last meeting was May 9.
So there has been meetings.
May 9, I was not informed of a meeting on May 9.
An email was sent out to all the committee members, the meeting took place at 3:30.
What about prior to that?
Prior to that, just a discussion. There was telephonic discussion, I believe, not only with Randy, but with Mr. Stankowitz as well. And again, a lot of it was as...
I was not informed about a meeting on May 9, I haven't attended a finance meeting in almost two months.
There was a meeting on May 9, they confirmed, I believe...
What time was that meeting on May 9?
3:30 PM, I believe it was called, I believe.
3:30.
3:30, in case you didn't hear.
If you had a meeting at 3:30 on May 9, there was no way I was gonna be able to attend anyway, because I was working.
Any other discussion?
Yes, yes, there is. What's the tax impact to the residents of this budget, this introduced budget?
This budget is comprised of the current budget and two utilities, the water and sewer utility, and electric utility, and the current fund budget. The current fund budget is, the total budget is going from $9,009,169,66 in 2018, up to $10,710,739 in 2019. The tax impact for local taxes is going from $5,661,123 up to $6,514,485. The minimum library levy is going from $297,164 up to $304,340. The electric utility is going from a budget of $7,634,17 up to $7,841,760, there is no rate increase for the electric utility. The water and sewer utility, the budget is going from $3,412,834 from in 2018 to $3,841,357 in 2019, with no rate increase in the water and sewer.
in two thousand nineteen, with no rate increase in the water and sewer.
Okay, so on an average-priced home, what can a local, what can a person expect to pay in this increase?
Well, that would be discussed at the budget hearing. I don't have that number with me tonight, but it's about a nineteen cent tax increase. So if you could take your assessed value and multiply it out, just as you would in, as your tax bill shows.
Well, maybe, can you just give a quick primer for people, so they, so because I think a lot of people are going to be very interested to hear how much more they're going to have to pay for taxes, so if you could just explain that to people, that would be great.
Okay, you take your assessed value, multiply it by nineteen cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, so you multiply your assessed value times point one nineteen divided by one hundred, that would be your municipal increase.
Okay, and that's, and that's at an average, an average-priced home in Milltown is what, one sixty-seven, something like, something like that?
I don't know that number off the top of my-
I think that's the average assessed value.
Right.
So the value of a home is three twenty assessed, it's about fifty percent.
Yeah, because we're at about a fifty percent ratio. So added that tax increase, how much is debt service?
Just about twelve cents.
So twelve, twelve out of nineteen cents is just for debt service?
Correct.
And I'll take a flyer that it has to do with that project across the street?
That's the major impact.
Okay.
And I'll have a budget presentation. I will say this, Mr. Mayor, the budget will be advertised in abbreviated form. It will be available in the clerk's office in its full context, and will be available on the municipal website.
Thank you.
So I have a question slash comment. I appreciate Mr. Barr's diligence in working on this, and now Jeanette will inherit it. They are the B.A. and CFO, so they do all the number work. However, we as the governing body need to understand the impact and the ramifications of it, and so I was, I got it on Friday, but we will, we will go through it with the public in a month, but before that, will we be expecting something from the finance committee to explain the impact on the various departments, or where, what needed to be cut, or how your decisions came as to what numbers to tell Mr. Barr to enter for this No, I'm asking the governing body. Mr. Barr did his CFO job, but we are the ones that make the decisions as to where the money will be allocated.
Okay, in discussions with Mr. Barr, with Mr. Stankowitz, the public hearing that is scheduled on the twenty-fourth is when this will be discussed, just as you just said now. That's when everything will be going, will be going over the discussion as to the budget increases, why it went up, what's going up, and why it's happening.
So we, as the council members, and you as the finance committee, and finance committee chair, don't have any insight more than the public that shows up here on January twenty-fourth?
I'd be more than happy to sit down with anyone and talk about it.
Well, are you going to do a report as to what's been going on in the finance committee all these months?
I just said, I would be more than happy to sit down with anyone and talk about it.
That's not a report.
No, it's a face-to-face answer, where they can ask questions, and I can legitimately give them answers.
So-
I can write a report about anything, doesn't mean it's going to include everything everybody wants to know.
Well, like, but we haven't gotten anything about what's gone on in the entire budget process.
You just got a copy of the budget tonight.
I beg your pardon?
Didn't you get a full copy tonight of the budget?
That's the budget. That's not the budget process, of the decision-making of the governing body. Did the finance committee have any impact on the budget, or is it just-
Yes, we have.
We as, okay, then that's what I'm asking. What, what was it?
Mr. Barr, I'm going to go, not so much what it was, is this the proper time to talk about it, or is it-
I can tell you the process, we have met with several of the larger departments to discuss the-
We've met with all of them.
To discuss what the budget requests, made some adjustments, and came up with a final product.
And turned down request.
Sure, sure.
So each department, I'm sure Mr. Councilman Revolinski would want to hear the impact to the Recreation Department, Councilwoman Kerber would want to know the impact to the DPW, I would want to know the impact to the Utilities Department, and as of right now, I don't, I, I have been speaking to my department head, saying that I have absolutely no idea what's going on in the budgetary process.
Well, this, this is now when we take the time to bring this back.
So the budget is presented, I would like to know what went on in the finance committee.
This is the time when we take this budget back to the department heads, and compare it with their last year's budget, and to see what they got, what they wanted, and for us to go back as the representative or liaison to that department and say, we want to fight for more of this, or maybe we think they don't necessarily need that, or this is more important. The finance committee helps create the budget, now we talk amongst ourselves and go back and do our due diligence, and then come prepared for June twenty-fourth to discuss any proposed changes, or if we like the budget as it is.
So, but we do not get any more information than the, than the general public? We can just read the numbers, just like everybody else that stops in at the clerk's office and gets it?
We, we can, but we have to talk to our fellow council members. We got to talk to Ron, we got to talk to our department heads, and say, what, what did you guys discuss?
But that's exactly right. However, I'm saying it would be nice to have been apprised of this all along, or at least now, get some sort of, I could get a report as to what went on in the discussion of the Utilities Department. You could get a report as to what went on in the discussion of the Recreation, or DPW, or whatever department that may, you know, may be affected by a cut, the, we, we need personnel, but we just couldn't afford it this year, or we decided to do, we, we decided to take a look at this instead of that. We have no information about that right now whatsoever, other than a number on a page.
My suggestion would be, is that now that we have this document that was just handed to me this evening, now would be a good time for each council person to request a meeting with the business administrator, CFO, and the finance head, to sit down and review things that may or may not be in your department's budget.
So I guess I don't understand why we have a finance committee then, because we're, we're throwing everything on Mr. Barr and the B, and the new B.A., when really, the finance committee is to be, to liaise with the remainder of the council. And I'm saying that we haven't gotten that information, so we shouldn't have to set up an appointment, we should be a collaborative body and share what information we have. If I have a Utilities Committee meeting, I have no problem getting up here and saying, we discussed X, Y, and Z. I'm curious as to why we haven't been privy to that in the finance committee.
All, all I could say is the things that I know that have gone in the past, and basically, the way that I'm explaining it is the way that it has transpired over the years. That's kind of how our system of government is, is that the council works with the professionals and prepares the budget. In other towns, the mayor prepare, in other forms of government, the mayor prepares the budget.
That's, that's fine, and I, as I said to begin with, I appreciate it. It is their job to prepare the budget, however-
Right, but now it's the time for the council people, as department, as liaisons to the department, to go through the budget with their department heads, and then go to bat to either, either cut the budget, if they don't, if you don't agree-
I think we're daily a dollar short on that, Mr. Mayor.
If you don't agree with how much is, that there's going to be too much impact, then you have to look for places to cut. If there are things that your department heads need, you need to be able to go to bat and convince the council that this is something that needs to be in the budget.
Wouldn't that have been-
That's how the process goes.
The process in the past has been, however, to be, I believe, a little more open and transparent about what's been going on with the budget. I, I believe we used to have finance committee meetings and the preparation of the budget open to the public.
Back in the nineteen nineties, when I had finance, that's exactly how it went. Every department head, you were, you came in one at a time, you sat down, you brought in what the department said would, department heads would bring in whatever personnel they wanted to be present at the meeting. The public was allowed to attend, we'd have like, one or two people would show up. The firemen would have to come in and discuss what they wanted. Every department had to come in, discuss what they wanted, and then the decisions were, were hashed out there.
So we've gone from having an open public meetings to meetings where not even all of the finance committee is invited?
I cannot attest to anything in the way of those meetings, because they're not my department.
But you could see that as elected representatives for the people of Milltown, we are presented with a budget, the same as Joe Blow who lives on Main Street.
Right.
There's no, we have no collaboration.
But now is the time where the council liaison and the department heads meet with the people who have prepared the budget. You'll go through it-
They, they didn't prepare, they are not elected officials. They are our professionals who prepare the budget.
That's what I just said. They prepared the budget with the input of the finance committee.
But they did not do all of the free work with, with the finance committee. They are the professionals who are tasked with coming up with the numbers to make it work. They are not the ones ultimately who make the decision as to what power the tax rate will increase, what we cut, what we move from one place to another, how we take out surplus.
That's all get painted by the bottom line in this, in this-
I believe that that had to have had some conversation in the various finance committee meetings. I don't think Mr. Barr or Jeanette would say, I'm going to move everything out of surplus, or, or it's okay with me if I raise the, you know, they don't live here, they don't care whether they raise the tax rate twenty-five cents.
Respectfully, Councilwoman, I, I think that is a fallacy of perception. We have professionals, day in, day out, who are tasked with making sure that the bills are paid, the money is accounted for, and they come to us, council, for direction when they need assistance on, we need more money for this, we need more money for that, maybe we have more over here. It's not, the council does not run this town. It is our professionals that truly make the decisions to keep the day-to-day operations going, and they tell us what we need, and they tell us how much fluff we have or can have in a budget to help meet the needs and wants of the various departments. Now, I've sat with Ms. Petrie for Recreation throughout the year, and we've discussed time and time again her needs. I made that abundantly clear to the finance committee, that there are one or two things we absolutely need in the Recreation Department, and I won't take a no for it. Our finance department knows that, both the elected officials, as well as our CFO-
I have to interrupt a second here.
And our business administrator.
You made abundantly clear to the finance committee, when is the first time I'm hearing it come out of your mouth now?
Nick, Councilman Legati, respectfully, I have mentioned to you in the past the one or two items that I have said we absolutely need in, in that department.
One at a time, please. One at a time, please.
With, just, just with that said, I, I think it's a fallacy to think that, that the elected officials go down and say, this is what I want, this is what's going to happen, and come hell or high water, this is how the budget gets put together. That's not true. Our hired professionals, our CFO, our business administrator, and our auditor, look at the numbers from two years ago, as required by the state, and say, here's what you got. Here's what we need to keep the ship afloat. And that's, and then it's up to us to say how to best fill those gaps.
Interestingly enough, you just said you went to the finance committee to say what the Recreation Department wanted.
Individually, yes, because that's the responsibility as a council member.
But you just said that the professionals do it, so why did you go to the finance committee if the professionals are making the budget?
I've told both the professionals and the finance committee that these are the needs of the Recreation Department.
And I think this year, I mean, last year, a lot of it came out because we had the whole issue with the water rate, and I know how it worked last year, because we had more discussions, because the rates were going to be increased. This year, however, there has been no communication with the council whatsoever regarding, we're tight in this area, we need more in that area, you know, that would be, and it doesn't have to be, we don't have to sit up here and obviously do it in, in open council, but even just an email, minutes from the meetings would be helpful, so we would know the direction that it's taking. And I, and I understand that it is ultimately the CFO's responsibility to put together a budget, but if that's the only responsibility to put together a budget and have no input from the council, why are we, why are we here?
Well, they do, they do have input from the council, because that's what January and February are for.
And we've gotten no reports about that.
The council liaison from each department sits with their department, sits with their department head, reviews the needs and desires of the upcoming year with those, with that personnel. Those desires are then brought to meetings that the finance committee holds with the professionals, and they go through the numbers and decide what needs to be in, what needs to be out, what leftovers there might be, and basically what it is, is you have a month or two to prepare your whole year next year, and it starts with the department head and the council liaison. That's where it starts. From there, all the finance committee does is, is really, they sit with the professionals and represent the council, and the desires of the department heads and the council liaisons for what needs to be in that budget. That's basically all they do.
So I wasn't at the one where we discussed utility?
Did you have a meeting with your department head at the beginning of the year?
I did, and I have about a meeting with, I meet regularly with my department head. However, you're indicating that the liaison goes into the budget meeting with the department head?
They have their own meeting.
Correct.
Right.
So, and then it hangs, and we said, we have a couple months, we've had January, February, March, April, May. We've had five months.
Right.
With, with no outcome until this weekend.
Mr. Barr, did you have contact with the various department heads, meet with them, and find out what their needs, wants, and desires were for this year's budget?
Absolutely. And I appreciate the way your, your comments, Mr. Mayor, however, I have no problem with what Mr. Barr has done. He has done an exceptional job. My question is, why we do not get more communication from the finance committee regarding the budget and the budget process?
Well, I think they've finally gotten to the point where they are able to put it together. Am I correct, Mr. Barr? And this is probably together?
And, and, Mr. Mayor, with all due, with all due respect, you are not the chairman of the finance committee. I'd appreciate it if you let Mr. Dixon speak for himself.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely not. I'm just, you asked how the process went, and I told you how the process was early on in my career, and how it evolved to this point. I don't know, I haven't had the finance in a long, long time.
So let me ask Mr. Dixon, do you have minutes from your meetings this year?
I have the notes that I took.
Would you be willing to share those with the full council?
If the council has a question, ask the question.
Well, my question to you is, will you please share the minutes of your finance committee meetings?
As I said earlier, I will give you my cellphone number to everyone in town. If they want to sit down, I'll sit down with them.
I do not have, want to have a one-on-one meeting with you.
I will tell you what-
Okay, hold on a second.
Well, I can't answer if she keeps talking.
That's okay.
Wait, I want the me, the minutes of the finance committee meetings. Will you share those, yes or no?
No.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Actually, I just have, I have one more question.
I already asked for a roll call.
You didn't ask if there's any more questions.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
No.
Councilwoman Kerber?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Man, lost him.
Oh, no.
Who's he calling?
I think you failed.
Still great.
Nick, you there?
Absolutely no.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mayor?
No.
Councilman Revolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have three ayes and two, and three noes.
Introduction.
We have three ayes and three noes. Now, my question would be to the attorney, is this something that the mayor can vote on?
Yes, because it's an introduction.
Okay. I will vote for the affirmative for the introduction, however, okay, I would expect every council committee chair to meet with their department, to meet with the professionals in the town, and ask the finance chair to be present at the meeting. I would ask there to be notes taken by someone, and so they can be discussed or given to the full council, if that is indeed allowed. And the only reason I'm going to vote in the affirmative is so we can continue this process.
Thank you.
So I would suggest highly that if you're not happy with the process, if you're not happy with the amount, that you show up at the hearing, or between now and then, work out your department's situation, and we can take it from there. I don't know- not happy with the amount, that you show up at the hearing or between now and then, work out your department's situation, and we can take it from there. I don't know how I will vote if it goes to a tie in the future. I think it's all going to be based on if you guys do your work.
I just want to say, I don't want to make it seem like you can't vote for the tie if there is, you know, I said because it's introduction. You can break the tie now, and you can break the tie later, I believe as well, but just so it's clear to everybody.
Thank you. Okay.
And?
So there's my vote.
We have four ayes and three noes, Mr. Mayor.
So, do we have any old business to come in for the council this evening? Hearing none, any new business to come in for the council? Hearing none. Audience comments, please state your name and your address for identification on the record.
Phil Zembrun at 40 Van Lu Avenue. So is that budget that each of you have in your hands, is that available anywhere that I could download, copy?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Barr said that earlier. I think it's available tomorrow, he said it'd be on the website.
It'll be available on the website tomorrow as well as in my office for anybody who'd like to review it.
Okay. So, we're set for the budget presentation on the 24th. So I would assume that at that meeting, is that meeting going to be run by Mr. Barr or by Ms. Larison?
I would imagine a budget about being would be run by the mayor.
No, no, the budget presentation, that's what I'm talking about. Are you going to give that presentation or is Ms. Larison?
The budget presentation will probably be run by myself.
Okay, and will the, Mr. Stankiewicz be here?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm assuming that that include like the budget drivers where you'll show where even Councilman Dixon might sit there and say, "These are the budget drivers that drove the budget that arrived at this area?"
I would imagine so, yeah. I'm sure you're going to have a highlight and/or lowlight sheet.
Yes.
Not a PowerPoint presentation, all right?
Well, it will be a PowerPoint presentation.
PowerPoint presentation? Wonderful. And then, Mr. Dixon, when are you available to discuss the budget one-on-one?
Call me.
Call you?
Don't work. I'm sorry, I do work.
Okay. I'll see you after the meeting for your phone number. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Bearded man in the back of the room.
Yes, who, once in a while I come up and say something. Russ Einbinder, 220B South Main Street. Got to make sure the post office understands there's an A and a B over there, got to work on that. Nothing to do with this meeting. July 4th committee, I'm starting to get a little hyped with that kind of stuff right now, and the reason why is it's just a lot of work. It's a year process every time you get to that point. One of the things we're doing, as I mentioned with the kids were here last week, is we're having a wine tasting, which you're all invited to, of course, we want everybody there. It's $30 for, I don't know, like 150, 200 different wines and vendors and all kinds of things. They have IPAs and whiskeys and vodkas, and not just wine, it's crazy, and a lot of food. You know, so you can all look like me perfectly around, but even more fun is that, you know, when we do it, sometimes we get 200, 300 people this. It's like a mini-event by itself. It's a lot of fun, just like we had Ariella Hopkins Day, people of all over the place came together this past weekend. These type of things that make Milltown wonderful. I mean, it was just such a wonderful event this past weekend at Hopkins Day. We have some other great things that are going on in the near future. Fourth of July is what probably we're known best for around the area and around the state more, but I just can't say enough that with all the nonsense I see sometimes on social media, and I see some nonsense, I also see some really good things. But with all that being said, I almost always see positive things about the Fourth of July and what it does for Milltown as a community. So I can't stress enough that even if you can't make it to the wine tasting, and you want to make sure that you get your money in to help support everything again this year, that's a good thing too. But even more important, make sure you come, make sure you tell people to come and enjoy the Fourth of July in Milltown. And you have me and a bunch of other people on this committee that do it for years, but the reason we do it is because it kind of makes our town what it is. So please, if you want to help out, we're looking for a few more people that might want to join us also, because some of the people keep on leaving us and doing things like, you know, going to the council and stuff like that. So, if you want, any more information, Russ Einbinder, you can find me very easily lots of different ways. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Lee Weisberger, 99 JFK Drive. Curious on the tree issue. You say people are reneging, that they don't want to have trees taken down now. Could you elaborate a little more on that? Why? Because, you know, it's been a long process.
Because there's two people living in the house, and they can't agree upon it, so we decided, you know.
It's a domestic issue.
Are we, yeah, we're only talking one or two trees or something here? This is not a big issue?
It's only been like three, maybe four trees. That's all.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Council comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before I got cut off, I was going to ask Mr. Barr if he could just go over those numbers again. He went over them kind of quickly. I just want to jot them down. So, just, I'm just trying to do some quick math. It looks like the current fund. Well, do you have a total, the tax levy?
Yes.
The total tax levy increase?
It's written in your document. She no matter of the budget document.
The total tax levy including library, $6,818,826 and 4 cents. I usually don't include the change.
Okay. But can you, can you break it down, the current fund?
That is the current fund.
Okay, but the difference, you gave me $10,710,389,9916?
That is the total budget for the current fund.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we have, we have a total, a total current fund budget of $10,710,739, of which $6,818,826 is the tax revenue. Everything else is coming from surplus, miscellaneous local revenues, state aid.
Okay. And what about electric and water?
The electric budget, total budget, is $7,841,760, of which the primary revenue obviously is user fees and $34,700 of surplus. And the water budget? Total budget for 2019 is $3,841,357, with rents, just bear with me because they're in two different columns, $3,80, about $3,83,000. And $542,000 of surplus, and the other for water tower, what the fees for the water.
So, just so I'm clear, so the 19 cent increase, what's the, what's, does that represent in dollars? One more time, 860, 860?
860, 538. Sorry, my voice is a little hoarse.
That's it, no, that's okay. Thank you very much. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you.
No problem. That's okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, so if I may just comment one more, just to finish up my discussion of the budget. When I do go to speak with my utility director, and as you were stating, that we can come back and discuss that, there are a number of fixed costs that we have no control over and decisions that have been made that we, meaning the utility director and I, have no control over. So when we come to speak about the budget and do our due diligence, part of what I was discussing about why I would have liked to have heard what was going on is, you know, I can meet with Mr. Eckert, and we can talk about the water sewer. However, I'm sure that there might be, might have been some discussion on how to come up with the capital improvement fund. You know, that would have to come, I believe, from a discussion on do, what do we have coming up? And, you know, it's disheartening as the person who's in charge of utilities to have a capital improvement fund that has for 2019, $30,000 in capital outlay of 70, when I flip to the capital budget and it's $11,677,000. So unfortunately, I can talk to John Eckert until I'm out of breath and dead, but that's not going to help get to where the water sewer and utility department has to get to. So I believe that those discussions probably have occurred already. So while you say to come prepared or to speak to the professionals and the finance committee chairman, that's not going to help with the major issues that we would see and how we came about to get to some of these numbers.
Anyone else?
Yes. On Saturday, we had Ariella Hopkins Day, and it's amazing, I know Mr. Hopkins always says the power of P. It's amazing what that little girl's spirit has done for this town in bringing people together. This year for the Fourth of July, I believe our slogan is, "Everyone comes together on the Fourth of July." This is really a great town where people do come together to help their neighbors, help one another, and really make our community better, and I thought it was really expressed by Saturday's events when it appeared as though everyone in Milltown had stopped by at one point or another. So congratulations on a very successful event, and we look forward to it next year as well.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Dorian. Ladies first, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone. On Sunday, the United Methodist Church did their community service outreach to the local businesses. We had 13 businesses throughout the town, including the senior center. We cleaned up the area as well as planted some flowers. We put some flowers, annuals, under the Gloria Bradford sign as well at Bradford Park, and they were very happy to see the work done. Part of it, the work was also done by a Brownie Troop, and she did some of the pots in closest to the building, and we just kind of finished it off with the rest of the flowers. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to apologize. I need to make self-corrections for two statements I made in today's meeting. I do apologize for misinforming council and the Milltown residents. The first would be Chief Brian Cannelli did inform me about the golf cart, if I may be permitted, per Chief Cannelli. I submitted a request for the golf cart last year, it has been granted. The cart will be used for outreach vehicles for DWI, distracted driving, as well as utility driving during July 4th, et cetera. I had said that I didn't hear it, I didn't know about it until Saturday. I must apologize. The police chief did send me that email a while ago. I just got about it and just found it. My second thing that I must retract is that Council President Dixon did call for a finance committee meeting on May 9th. I did find an email on May 6th at seven o'clock, at 6 o'clock, from Mr. Barr to attend a 3:30 meeting on 5/9, but everybody in that committee very well knows that I can't make meetings until 6 o'clock when I get home from work. But it was an email sent to me, and I said that there wasn't, and I apologize to Council President Dixon and Mr. Barr on that. The other thing is, as well as you couldn't see me tonight, I followed along on YouTube, Russ. It's a great picture. I appreciate everything you do. I followed the meeting, and I saw everybody on my end. I'm sorry you couldn't see me, though.
We miss you, Nick. We'll see you soon. Anyone else?
Second.
Sure.
I would like to thank the churches in town. Everybody's not aware of it, this past Sunday was their day of community service, and a lot of the people who had gone to church are branched out from the churches and go to different organizations throughout the borough and help those organizations do what they have to do. A group did come down to the American Legion, they helped us prepare the flags that will be put up next week, or this week, I'm sorry, before Memorial Day, up and down Main Street in the borough, and I want to thank those people for their time and effort in preparing those flags. It's 130 flags that are displayed throughout our borough on Main Street, and I appreciate the help and the people that showed up to get them ready to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, mayor's comments? I'm going to keep it real brief. I'd like to thank Councilman Legati on his corrective statements. If you're still there, Councilman, thank you very much. It's very much appreciated, and that's, I'm sure, why you get returned to this dais because of your ability to be on it. So thank you very much, Nick.
No problem.
And with that, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy get-ready-for-summertime because today was the first day the air conditioning went on in my house, so get ready for the electric bills. With that, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So be it.
Second. I have a motion by Council President Dixon, seconded by Councilman Revulinski. It is non-debatable. Good night.
Is there no executive session tonight?
No.
No executive session.
Okay.
We got it over you, Nick.
Okay.